And noticing we turned the recorder on a little late, it is a workshop on November 6th, 2019 at 2:02 PM. All right, projects discussion, discuss partnership with Port of Brookings Harbor to manage the port's RV park, Ms. Schmelzer.
Yes, so the Board of Commissioners had a workshop with the Port Commission last month, this past month, and one of the, we discussed ways that we could work together, and one of the items we discussed was possibly county parks helping the port with the management of the RV park. The board had directed staff to pursue exploring what type, what a lease like that would look like, what those terms could be, holdups, anything that might prevent us from having that partnership. Josh from the Parks Director and I did go down and we did meet with the Port Commission, and they were receptive to the idea of exploring it further. So Josh put together some thoughts on paper, he shared them with, the, the Port Commission had established like a little subcommittee to just work on this project, so Josh shared his thoughts with that little subcommittee, and they gave us a little feedback on it. Josh did put together just some ideas that he did give us for the packet, the meeting packet, and he is here to provide a little PowerPoint on the proposal, and then we do have members of the Port Subcommittee here to discuss the proposal with us, to see if maybe we can get a little further on an agreement and come to some terms that both parties would be willing to accept. Josh, would you like to, go ahead?
Josh Hopkins, Curry County Parks Director. Just give me one second here.
What'd you, you need that?
I can tell you text savvy.
So while Josh is working on that, um, just a reminder, so this is the oceanfront property down at the port where they currently have RVs parked, they operated as an RV park campground. So, that's the subject, part of the port we're discussing today.
Josh, if you would pull that one taller microphone over as well. Thank you.
Not a problem. So yeah, this is the beachfront RV park, it is located at the Port of Brookings Harbor. It is right on Sports Haven Beach. I think this is either the only or one of the only RV parks that is directly on a beach in the entire state of Oregon. Uh, it was built late 1960s, I think 68 is when it was actually built. Since that time, it has been a home to numerous tourist activities, very big asset to the Brookings area as a whole, and promoting all of the different tourist activities that go along with the town and what the port does. In its current configuration, this is a map that I pulled off the website of what they have, it's a mixture of RV sites that are full hookup, some of them are really desirable pull-through sites that a lot of the campers, especially the long-term RVers, really enjoy using, and then, uh, dry RV sites and tent sites. Currently...
No extra charge?
Currently, with the campground RV park, the main restroom facility is in disrepair and needs replaced, so they aren't allowing dry RV camping or, uh, tent camping onsite, uh, and only allowing the people that are able to hook up to the septic systems with their, uh, standard RVs. With that being said, there is, according to this map, about 163 total campsites. That's important to note because part of the funding for Curry County Parks is due our state RV license fees. We get $700 to $1,000 a year per campsite. That adds to a large amount that we would be getting and expecting back from the state every year for our thing. Our next reporting cycle is in spring for that, we report every two years, so if we were able to get a partnership in place, it's really great on the timing wise for that. So, with what we presented to the board down at the Port of Brookings Harbor, the tentative ideas that were kind of put out to them, I did throw a caveat that I hadn't had a chance to review this with our board just because of timing and everything like that, was the idea of doing a 30-year lease where the county takes over the operations, maintenance, and future development of the RV park. We retain any of the state RV license fees increase, I'm not sure if we're even able to share those types of things just because it's a state provision like that. Uh, we would gain, you know, possessions of the RV park property, like the picnic tables and things along those lines. With the breakdown of the payouts, we would be doing a partnership where the county gets 25% of the net proceeds, 65% goes to the port, and 10% goes to repaying an interfund loan from the road department. Since the restroom needs replaced, part of this proposal was that we would do an interfund loan from our road department, which I checked with council, he said it is completely legal for us to do this. Currently, the restroom is estimated around, I believe, $400,000 to get replaced, a part of that estimation has building five additional RV sites to help offset the cost of the restroom. And, with that loan, the port itself is looking into doing some sort of loan option, do like a bank or a private loan, uh, there's always grant ways we could try to go about it, but grants aren't just like a private loan, grants aren't, uh, a sure thing, same with private loans, and this frees up our income-to-debit ratios and everything like that, and we already have the process in place for the county. That's why part of this was important to build a repayment structure of that loan into the thing, instead of other monies that have been pulled from the road fund, this actually will be repaid. Uh, after the road fund loan is repaid, we would split that 10%, making for a 70/30 split, and do payments quarterly. The net is basically just the actual revenue after the standard operating expenses, so, you know, when you're taking in consideration of your power, trash, that type of stuff, you deduct that, what you've spent, from how much you've brought in, and that's where we'd start our deductions for the net. After this information was presented to the port and put onto our packet, their Subcommittee had a meeting and they came up with some more information and feedback on that. Part of their feedback is to add in there that the Port Commission has, uh, say and approval of capital improvement projects that the county would be doing. That's understandable, it's still their property, they want to say in this. Additionally, one of the nice things we have working for us on this is we're not having to reinvent the wheel, they already have a lot of these projects mapped out and planned out and master-planned in their own process, so we actually have a game plan in place, we'd be able to just kind of pick up where they're at and start pushing those projects and checking things off down the line. Additionally, for their lease term, they're more interested in a 20-year lease that has a 20-year extension built in. For the state RV license fees, it needs to be a minimum of 20 years. In a situation like this, it's kind of different than what we have down at the Social Security Bar where we're looking for a 50-year lease, simply because we're going to have to invest and basically develop all the infrastructure for that. We already have infrastructure here, whether it's a 20-year lease or a 50-year lease, the idea is as long as everyone's doing their jobs and keeping the partnership good and going, it's going to be a forever type of lease. So I'm not as concerned with the 20-year as opposed to a 30-year type of thing, as long as it's long enough to get the state RV license fees. Uh, other things of note, they wanted to add in the fishing pier as a part of it, there's this little fishing pier right here that's right down at the RV park. It's right conjoined to it, it kind of makes sense if we're maintaining everything down there and maintain that as well. I haven't had a chance to go down and look at the fishing pier, but it looks like it probably needs some sort of work here and there, or at least there's some maintenance coming up. So that's something we'll need to address with the Subcommittee and really find out what that type of, uh, addition would do to this deal. And then they wanted to establish default limits that has a predetermined, a minimum amount of what they're going to get back with the net. Basically, the RV parks pays off a lot of like their past debts and stuff like that, so if something catastrophic happened and expenses increased greatly and usage decreased, they want to make sure that we'd be able to adjust our share of the proceeds to make sure they have a baseline that they know they can rely on to pay their bills. So, I think it's possible for us to actually come up with a good number for that. Based on the revenues that reported over the last six years, the main type of thing we're looking at that affects large amounts of visitor use is some sort of catastrophic weather event, some sort of wildfire or anything like that. If you look at the profits that they had in the 1718 year of 574,000 during the Cheko Bar Fire, it didn't hurt them as bad as you would imagine it would having that going on. I'm sure the 2011 tsunami probably caused port damage and a lot of stuff like that, but there's really not a lot we can control when it comes to those things, but looking at the six-year average of this, I think we should be able to come up with some sort of agreeable minimum amount, depending on what they need to make sure that they're able to continue to pay their bills and function the way they need to function. So with the six-year average of the last revenues and breaking it down, the net average revenue that they've had over the last six years is about 379,000, a little bit more than that, and then with the breakdown, the port would be getting 400 or 247,000 estimated, county parks would be bringing in just a little under 95,000, and repaying that loan from the road fund would be just a little under 38,000. After road fund loan is repaid, we'd split it into 70/30, you'd be looking at 265 for the port, 113 for the county. The money's here for this, one of the nice things for this proposal and this project that we don't have at other things like with, uh, Elk River, is we have past financials to look at, so we know that even if we're only able to maintain it to where we're keeping up with the historical average, that's still a decent amount of money for everyone to walk home with and keep being able to pay their bills. That being said, the idea behind this is that with a more focused management that specializes in campgrounds, RV parks, that type of thing, and as we're making improvements and upgrades to these facilities, we would be able to increase the revenue while decreasing the expenses, because we're catching up with a lot of the stuff that's been historically maybe not as much of a priority when you're trying to run a port and an RV park. Uh, it is important to note that this isn't a situation where the county is coming in and taking over a broken system. Part of the reason these fees are kind of looking at a 25% to 30% match is because as it stands, the port management of these RV, this RV park is good enough to turn a profit for it. So, you know, we're not white-knighting this type of thing, we're just barely coming in and bringing in an extra level of expertise to this type of a thing. Uh, so that's a part of it. That's really all I've got for this, if you guys have any questions, we can go over that. Uh, but based on the revenue totals and with the idea of getting the state RV license fees, this seems like a pretty decent deal that should be able to come up as an agreeable situation with.
Commissioner, Gold.
Um, just one question, I want to reiterate this, 30/70% split is on the net?
Yes, that'd be on the net after operational expenses, part of this agreement is going to be identifying what exactly those operational expenses are, so that everyone is clear and everything like that.
Okay, is the port eligible for any of this state licensing fees?
No, those only go to county park systems.
Okay, so that would be our advantage for, one of the advantages for us?
Yes, we have additional funding, uh, the state RV license fees basically pays for maintenance, upkeep, operational costs of RV parks for specific county purposes type of things, so.
Yeah, and being a past Port Commissioner, I know upkeep of this RV park has been horrible, hard to, hard to keep up, especially the bathrooms, but where are we on the electric posts in the, I remember you were trying, we were trying to update those to higher wattage and so forth, where are we on that?
I believe their plan is to update those up to allowing for 50 amps, I think they have some 50 amps, 30 amps, and, uh, 114s or something like that, I forget what the standard is, and then the rest of them are up to 30 amps, but, uh, there are plans, you know, those are the type of upgrades that we would be facilitating with these extra...
Okay, because I know the big RVs can't even...
Yeah, you end up getting some sort of converter and then they're not able to run their microwave and coffee pot at the same time, it's...
Mm-hmm, well, we don't want to have that, so, okay, thanks.
All right, um, the lease, is that an auto-renew lease, or is it a negotiated lease?
Uh, as far as what those type of details are at this point, we haven't really gotten into that, uh, the idea is...
You said it was a 20 and then an additional 20?
Yeah, and that was just what came in a couple of days ago from the Subcommittee's information, but I haven't had a chance to really track this out.
Because I'd be wondering, is, is, you know, is it a negotiated lease for the second 20, or is it an auto-renew, you know, it has an option to auto-renew or not?
My recommendation would be to have it as probably a negotiated lease, just because things change, uh, and as so, things change, it may change your distribution amounts.
Uh, on your, on your picture of the pier down there, the fishing pier, uh, that you showed, um, you, you mentioned that there may be some maintenance, is there, um, anyone here from the port that could maybe fill us in a little bit more on what the maintenance on that is expected? Um, are we talking about new pilings, or are we just talking about some, some repairs on that? Yes, sir. Don't leave, Josh. Hey, don't leave, Josh.
My name's Gary Dillinger, Port Manager, um, yeah, the, uh, the fishing pier, as far as I'm aware of, the substructure underneath, the steel, would need to be recoded, is what I've seen personally, and then the parking lot has some puddles.
Okay.
That's be interesting.
One more question, seeing you're up there, if you know, um, I heard a number of $400,000 for a bathroom, are those gold knobs on the toilets, or, I mean, how big is, do we have drawings of this bathroom already, is it showers and everything else included?
There's four showers and, and I think, uh, six, um, three men, three men...
Well, we're looking at a concrete block building, I'm guessing, that you can walk in and power wash out if you need to.
Yeah, it'd be a drop-in, well, that's what we plan, is a drop-in, but if, if it goes to the county side of things, we, I pass on the design to the county, but they know what to put in there, but...
Okay.
But also, those costs also, roughly about $10,000 per site to build, so, has he got 50,000 sold, building those five sites, so we got the restroom plus those five sites.
For me, it seems like 350,000's a lot for, for a bathroom, so, yeah, my opinion. All right, that's all I have.
Gary?
Schmelzer?
Gary, doesn't the bathroom also include washers and dryers, laundry facilities?
No, not...
Okay, that was a different, different building then?
Yeah, this drop-in restroom is 200, 230,000 just by itself, then you got the site work you ought to do.
Okay, Commissioner Gold?
I know the bathroom, the present bathroom had been flooded a number of times, um, in big surges and so forth, is there anything that would be done to alleviate that?
Well, the plan is to move it back on the back row.
Uh-huh.
Move it back over here, plus we're going to raise the elevation of it a little bit, and we wanted to put a retaining wall in front of it as well, just...
Okay.
Extra protection.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, I want to thank two of the Port, uh, Commission members for traveling up here, second time in a little over two weeks, much appreciated. Um, Josh, I want to thank you for the work, uh, the insight, Director Schmelzer, um, you know, I might be, I'm enthused because one of our toughest jobs is bringing the different parties, cities, communities together, and so if we can help, and I think that's the attitude you have, how can we help, how can we make it a mutually beneficial program? And, um, it's just, it's just a good day, 2019 marks the year of moving forward with pulling our rural county of 23,000 people closer together, and so I very much, Mr. Chair, support this project as I see right now, uh, but we've also been doing similar collective work with the Forest Service, the BLM, and, um, and I think we need to accelerate, accelerate that over time, and I, I believe we are, and I think it's going to bear fruit for our citizens and visitors, all the above. So, uh, I don't know what the next step is, and did you have something else?
Well, I, I just want to mention, we might want to hear from other members of the Subcommittee too, but, um, I do want to remind you that eventually we are going to have to add staff as we take on more campgrounds, we're going to have to increase the staff in that department, um, so, you know, it's not that a pure profit, you know, that you see up there, we are going to have to account for some staff needs, especially if we take over Social Security Bar, or if we have anything to do with McVay Park, eventually Josh cannot do it all himself.
You can't split into two people?
So let's just keep that in mind. The other thing is, I know I have heard a concern about the split, uh, that the county wasn't getting a high enough port percentage, but as Josh had said, keep in mind, it's their property, they have the infrastructure in there, they've already done the marketing, they've already established the business, we are basically coming in to manage it, so to speak, and clean up some things that, that needed addressing.
Josh, I just, I want to echo Commissioner Boyce and thank you for your work on this, I know you've kind of really sped this along, and I want to thank the port for working with us on this as well. Um, I, I, one more question I have, because you, you're the finger on the pulse of that, uh, in the county, do you think, I mean, there comes a point where we're going to reach a saturation point in, in tourism, and I'm, I'm hoping we're growing tourism here, and I'm hoping economic development is going to continue to push that, but we're not at risk, in your opinion, of saturation of tourism where another campground may suffer because we're going to open up this many more spaces?
Uh, no, I wouldn't think that we could build a whole nother RV park down in the greater Brookings area, and it's not going to have that big of effect on some of these campgrounds already there, just because we have such a need. Slammin' Salmon Derby, perfect example, every hotel room was booked, and that wasn't even like a peak tourist season, so we've got the numbers of people coming here to support multiple projects like this, so.
This board relies on information, you know, so that's why, you know, I wanted to ask you that, and I like something that Commissioner Boyce said a while ago, mutually beneficial is good words. Um, this will, I think, mutually benefit both the Port of Brookings Harbor and the county, and the services that we'll offer campers for the future, I think is great, so.
So in your, in your memo information that you have there, there are three standard questions that we're just kind of looking for direction on, uh, one was to make sure the board's okay with moving forward with this project, next, the board will entertain the idea of using an interfund loan for the restroom, and then, you know, where you guys are at with the fee distributions and that stuff, just so we have kind of a painted picture moving forward while we're discussing things with the Subcommittee, and we can bring that all back to County Council so he can draft up a lease that, you know, is encompassing and doesn't take like 15 versions.
Mr. Gold?
I really think it's a win-win proposition, I'm not bothered by the split, simply because it's net instead of gross, so, I, I'm good with it.
I am, I think as well, uh, you know, like you said, the infrastructure's there, the Port of Brookings Harbor has bore the burden of that, so I'm fine with the split. Uh, my, my larger concern would be, you know, the, the restrooms, and making sure that those contracts all go out to fair bid, so that whoever's hired, um, you know, we're going to get the best bang for the county's dollar. As far as the negotiation and all that, I just applaud you, you all for working together and moving this forward so quickly. Commissioner Boyce?
Couple things real quick, uh, you mentioned saturation, and I understand where you're coming from there. You know, you saw the front page of the pilot last week, the fat tire on the beach, and I had this discussion with Director Schmelzer the other day, and one other person that's very much involved in visitor promotion, and the concern that some, someday there's, there's not going to be the need for RVs, I don't think that's a, I really don't think that's a big risk, but with the diversity that we can offer the travelers that, that use Curry County for a destination, i.e. the bicycle on the beach, uh, those folks, uh, are affluent, and, uh, they're coming here for a variety of reasons, and, uh, this, all of this helps us be better, uh, better set up to accommodate them. So, the other question I had real quick, have you had a chance yet to look at the terms of the, uh, road, road fund reserve repayment? Have you thought much about that?
Uh, yeah, I looked at the process that the board designed for that, and I believe this process would be a little bit different because this would be an interfund loan, uh, County Council could weigh in more on that.
So the, the program you're speaking about, Commissioner, is, um, when we're borrowing money to a special district, that would not be the case in this situation, what it would be would just be basically department to department, so it would be from Road Department to Parks Department. Josh did speak about, did, uh, discuss this with the Roadmaster, and, um, he understood that, you know, there'd be a repayment on it, so it's not that it would be a gift or free money, is that correct?
That is correct, but since you brought up, you know, the Roadmaster for various reasons, not in support of any sort of loan that goes out against the road fund, I'll just throw that out there, because...
Commissioner Gold?
Is he going to charge interest?
I would assume there's interest involved in it.
Okay, good.
I would think there should be.
That was the main part of my question.
Yes.
To understand the terms, thank you, Mr. Chair.
But I, I, I agree with Ms. Schmelzer on this, uh, as probably, uh, counsel, um, you know, this is something that the, the board controls, where a district, when you loan money to a district, their board takes over control of, this is something that would main, you know, this, this board would maintain control of, so that, that's, it's just an interdepartmental loan, but I, I fully think, you know, at a minimum, but the road funds, uh, fund is making basically 2.5% annually right now, so it would have to be in excess of that for it to make it, uh, make it worthwhile, so.
That's all detailed.
Okay, great. Anything else?
So let's, um, if, does, do members of the Subcommittee have anything to add?
The only question I have is...
Name please?
Sorry. For the record. Ken Range, Port Commissioner, the only reason, or the only question I have is, there's going to be a transition period, it isn't going to just switch over one day, we're there in the management, and next day you are, so, um, just, we haven't addressed that, um, I think before we have another Subcommittee meeting, that should get addressed in some manner, and then, how are you going to handle reservations? So, those are the only two items that I have, the rest of it we'll be discussing. Thank you.
Guys want answers, uh, obviously there's going to be a part where, meeting with them down at the port to find out what their current operational means are for these campgrounds. Again, we've sped this from, you know, I think it was the 16th of October to today that this has been going on, and we haven't had a chance to really sit down with the port and find out what their operational standards and everything that they do at the campground are. Uh, so part of this process moving forward is to identify what, you know, that type of transition period's going to look like, when the county's going to take over, what type of, uh, things that we have in place that are kind of similar processes between what we're currently running with our other campgrounds, and what, what they're doing, and what kind of changes that, you know, we'll bring over. As far as handling online reservations or anything like that, we do have our own online reservation system, uh, I've looked up your guys' system that you're currently using, it's similar to an extent. Uh, with our online reservation system, it would increase what we pay by, I think, $90 a year, uh, to add another campground to it. Additionally, our payment processor that we use for that system allows us to add another whole, uh, account to that, so I've already looked into that, so when we're looking at doing this transition over, it might be a thing depending on the time of year, because I know they do six months in advance, uh, reservations, so if they're already starting to book for July and stuff like that, we may keep and use their current system for the first year and then plan that transition later on, just kind of seems, there's the whole mechanical working of it that we need to figure out as we go through this process, we just haven't had a chance to yet.
Well, I know that if someone logs into Port of Brookings Harbor campsite reservation line, that you can slave your URL directly to them, so when they click on their button, it actually goes to your button.
Yeah.
So I know those kind of things that can be, can be done easily.
Yeah, and that's as simple as, you know, one of the nice things is they have all sorts of information about their RV park all written up, when I talked to our reservation company about possibly adding them, the general thought was, oh yeah, we could do it in a day, because we have the information, they just copy it over and everything like that, and it just gets integrated into what we already use, and, you know, their click here for reservation button just turns into the URL for our reservation, uh, so.
So I would just urge, you know, um, so you know, um, I, I believe this board is open to what is comfortable for the committee down there, as well as the board for Brookings Harbor, uh, Port, so, uh, you know, I think you have, from what I gather here, our full support on how you would like to move forward with this, with this, as expeditiously, expeditiously or not, um, you know, just let us know and we'll, we'll try and accommodate you, so. Thank you.
Gary, the port does originally, Josh and I were going to come back next week for a meeting, I think it was next week or the week, week after, I think it's, uh, the 19th, was it Tuesday? Do you want us to, um, come down before then to discuss it, or wait until then and come back to discuss it?
I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Let me talk to, um, some of my Commissioners and find out what they want to do.
Okay.
Right now, I got, I got a, uh, action item for the, uh, RV park lease with the county, so...
Okay, great.
But if we have another meeting before that, I'm not sure yet, but I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thanks, Gary. All right.
Two thirty on the dot.
All right, next we have, uh, B, which would be opioid and addictions, Curry County cultural impacts, Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, we have a very distinguished group here today, and, you know, if I may, um, I want to mention, uh, incident that happened, uh, Monday morning, and that was a family of nine that were killed and, uh, ultimately burned, just 75 miles southeast of, uh, the southeast corner of Arizona, in the Sonora Province of Mexico, and, um, I think it ties into the discussion we're going to have today, how close that is to America, and there's a lot of facts that still obviously need to come out, to what extent the, the drug cartels were involved, but it was an absolute, um, massacre, and I'm still processing it, and I don't know anybody that was involved, um, but I would subject your approval, Mr. Chair, like to have a moment of silence, this was three mothers and six children, two youngest were twins, and, um, just died a horrible death, and, um, they're almost positive it'll prove that it was in relation to two competing, um, cartel groups, so if we could have that moment of silence, Mr. Chair. um, cartel groups, so if we could have that moment of silence, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So, uh, I just picked names at random, I gave you each, I'll call three out at a time. Um, yeah, you wanna adjust the microphone each time you come up. Uh, five to, five minutes would be ideal, up to ten minutes?
We got five minutes. Not set up. We have five minutes.
Not gonna cut 'em off. I mean, they've all been working hard to get here, so I don't know why we're just gonna do five minutes, but, um, I, everybody showed, and everybody's interested, and this is very important to the public. So, we'll start with Everett Dial, then Mona Chandler, and then Monica Griffin, if we could.
Thank you, Everett Dial, DA. So, um, we didn't, you know, we didn't, uh, used to ever see heroin, and, uh, I'd say the first, uh, I started in Pryonville in ninety-two as the deputy DA, I don't think we ever had a heroin case there. When I first came here in two thousand five, I don't think we had any heroin cases. Around two thousand ten, or maybe even later, that they, they started showing up, and we, we have been getting them, and, uh, we get maybe one or two a month, uh, not, not more than that. And, uh, as far as, uh, opiate pills, prescription pills, we, we see that, often we see that in, uh, cases where they're somewhat related. We had one case in Brookings where, uh, one person had a prescription for opium pills, and he went to his friend's trailer, and the guy in the trailer ended up hitting him. He, he went there to steal that fellow's opium pills, and that fellow ended up hitting him with a rock and stealing his opium, his, uh, OxyContin pills. And so, we see that. We had a case where, uh, fellow was in jail, uh, had a very high prescription of, uh, opium pills, and he was, uh, vomiting them back up to sell them to the other prisoners. That was before sheriff work's time. Uh, but anyways, uh, as sheriff, that is, uh, the, but the drug, it, well, it seems that, my experience is that, uh, in talking to law enforcement folks is that most of the people who use heroin sit around and watch TV. And the, the drug that, uh, has always been the biggest problem in this county, and basically in all counties in Oregon, uh, has been and continues to be methamphetamine. And so, I'm gonna just divert a little bit to meth, because meth is clearly, uh, worse, uh, maybe it's not worth for, for the individual's health, but it certainly is worse for society. Uh, meth users, they, they eat it, they smoke it. Uh, when you go to the store and you see in the tobacco section, they're selling little butane pipes, that's not for tobacco. Uh, that's because to smoke meth, you, you heat it up in a, in a glass pipe. If you don't have a glass pipe, you can break an incandescent bulb and use that glass. Uh, they heat it up hot enough with a butane torch, they just start smoking, and they inhale that smoke. Uh, they also inject it. Uh, it's popular conception among meth users that if you, uh, inject something with a needle, and you have friends with you, if you backdrop, get a little blood in there with the methamphetamine, and you hand the needle to the person next to you, when he injects it, he'll get a high faster because it's got your blood in it. Of course, that is why a lot of these drug users get HIV and other diseases by sharing needles. Um, the, uh, the meth users, uh, I've had them testifying grand jury that they've been awake without any sleep, uh, for up to two weeks, uh, at a time. Uh, after being awake for three days, uh, they begin to hallucinate because they're dreaming while they're awake, uh, and they get what's referred to as meth psychosis. People that use meth, uh, too much, uh, can get what the police call pervert week, where they are, uh, they're, men, essentially become mentally ill from drug use. And we have people like that in our jail all the time, uh, who otherwise would have been okay but for methamphetamine abuse. So, uh, meth, uh, is terrible, I, uh, it rots, it rots the teeth. Uh, I've spoken several times, I've been with police and said, uh, well, that person who I know to be a meth user, they have nice teeth, and they say they're dentures. Their teeth are gone. They're relatively young people, because meth, uh, meth, heavy meth users will lose their teeth. I'm, I'm rushing, because I don't, I only have five minutes.
Correct, no rush.
They can, uh, they can die from overdoses, uh, if they take too much, uh, methamphetamine, they can overheat. I remember I was in Pryonville at a motel where the dead guy was completely naked, lying on a, on the floor, and he had been running from a bathtub of cold water, and he had a chair directly in front of the air conditioning, trying to cool himself down because he'd taken too much, and eventually died from it. Um, the, uh, uh, but the other thing about meth users is they, they commit crimes. Uh, I did defense work in Eugene, and I had a stu, gal who'd been a stewardess, got hooked on meth and turned to a life of crime. She was good with computers, she had a program that allowed her to create checks with anybody's check number and name on it, and so she would print up checks and give it to her meth friends to take out and try to cash, committing identity theft. Uh, she would forge driver's licenses, any other kind of legal documents you could think of. She told me, she said, Everett, when you use meth, you just wanna commit crime, because it sounds like fun. Uh, unlike heroin users that sit at home and, and watch TV, uh, until they run out, and then, of course, they could cause crimes. Uh, the, um, the, uh, legislature has lowered possession of all drugs to misdemeanors. Uh, we can charge it as a felony if they have a usable amount, and they have a prior felony conviction, or they have two, um, other drug convictions. The, um, I've heard that that's caused, uh, attorney, defense attorneys to tell their clients not to go to drug court, 'cause all you're gonna get is a misdemeanor conviction now. So, drug court attendance is down, uh, at least that's my understanding. We don't have drug court here, uh, I'm not sure we would get very far if we tried. The other thing is, I'm seeing, uh, far less drug cases than we used to get, uh, and the sheriff can talk to that. I know that one of the reasons is that, uh, a lot of agencies no longer do the NIC test because apparently there's dangers inherent, well, that's the, that's the instant test of whether or not the, the substance is, uh, methamphetamine or heroin or LSD or whatever, because there's dangers now inherent in those tests. And so, the dope gets, uh, sent to the lab, and the state lab is, uh, backlogged for, it takes six months or a year to get the results back. So, uh, and we're just not seeing as many drug cases as we used to. And given that so many of them are misdemeanors now, uh, if we get, if we get a, a drug, uh, charge, an assault or a drug charge, and, and some other more major crime, we tend to go, uh, in negotiations and say plea to this, and, and sign up for treatment for your drug problem. Uh, we'll drop the other one because it's now misdemeanor. Um, you know, heroin, obviously, people that use heroin, uh, can die from it, um, but the majority, almost all of our identity thefts that we see in this county, almost all of our burglaries, almost all of those cases, uh, the people are meth users. And I just wanted to add one last thing about meth. I looked up some of the Curry County murders that we've had in the last, uh, decade or so, and I wanted to just mention those, because almost all of them, uh, involve methamphetamine. So, we had Alicia Myers stabbed and bludgeoned an elderly woman to death, stole her car and her money, and used that money to buy methamphetamine. Um, she was convicted and got life with parole. Ethan Williams, uh, was convicted of murder and abuse of a corpse. He had methamphetamine with a young woman and strangled her, and then raped her, uh, and then raped her again after she died. Uh, he used methamphetamine with the victim before the murder. Uh, Gregory Bowen, uh, after he had, he had committed murder in Nevada, he came up here, uh, committed murder and a number of other crimes, uh, he had used methamphetamine, uh, days before and after he murdered another man. Gregory Honshell, uh, he shot and killed his grandparents here in Curry County, stole their car. Uh, he had, uh, purchased and used methamphetamine just after he committed the murders. And lastly, a fellow named Billy Jean Pruitt, who was never convicted, but had apparently, was being investigated for murdering and torturing a neighbor, killed himself in the desert when he was found by Detective Pollock, um, Brookings Police Department. Uh, he had a long history of methamphetamine use. The one, uh, murder that, uh, I, I prosecuted with Scott Jackson was a fellow named Jude Day, uh, who got convicted of manslaughter. Uh, his is the only one, uh, in recent history that did not involve methamphetamine. Uh, his involved alcohol, both parties were drunk. So, anyways, I know there's an opiate crisis, I don't doubt that, and, uh, but, uh, from where I sit, uh, methamphetamine is the worst drug, uh, and that, uh, really needs our attention, and, uh, it's, uh, I don't know, I don't see things get better, so... That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Everett.
Yep.
Mona?
Okay, came to approach.
You've been in a lot of courtrooms.
Thank you.
For permission to approach.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, my name is Mona Chandler, and I'm the director of CASA for Curry County. Um, I was hired, um, February fourteenth of two thousand eight, under the county's direction, um, under the auspice of the juvenile, um, uh, the juvenile department. And at that time, um, under the juvenile court, or under the juvenile department, um, I served there for three years, and then, um, on the fourth year, I transferred, um, my program under the Douglas County CASA program. So, I am now currently housed for the last almost seven years under the Douglas County CASA program. Um, I am going to speak on the behalf and piggyback off of, um, Mr. Dial, because the majority of the children that come into care in our county, um, is based off of methamphetamine. Um, last year, we had a hundred and twelve children in this county that was in foster care for at least one day, a hundred and twelve. When I started in two thousand eight, there was seventy-five children in care and three advocates. I currently, to this date, have twenty-three advocates and serving half of the children that are in foster care currently right now, which is about seventy children. But I wanna go back to the hundred and twelve that was in, uh, care last year for, uh, two thousand eighteen. That is the highest I have ever seen it. Um, we only have three, thirty-one hundred children in our county, so you kind of figure out the math on that, because that's a lot of kids in care in a very small county. Um, the majority of the petitions that are drawn on the methamphetamine use against the parents are, um, based due to neglect and, um, some physical abuse, but the neglect is the highest. And when I talk about the neglect, I talk about medical neglect, I talk about dental neglect, I talk about food deprivation that these children endure because there's no food in the home. Um, they are, um, exposed to criminals that come into their homes, so they're put at risk. Um, so, the, um, children that are, uh, brought into the, into care are then, um, removed from their homes. They're placed either in community foster care, or they're placed in, um, family foster care. And when I mean community foster care, that could either be a foster family that is within our county, it could also mean that they're placed inside a facility that is outside of our county, because we have no resources for these children to go. So, normally, they are either shipped to Coos Bay, um, at Baloney Ranch, or that we try to find, they try, DHS Child Welfare tries to find other placements, um, within the Coos or outlining areas to place these children. Um, as far as the, um, the rapidness of metham, methamphetamine use, the, um, outcomes for these kids are, um, not always the best outcomes. Um, we have, we had several children last year that were born, um, meth exposed in, in utero, and, um, I can think of one particular case who the child is, was, um, methamphetamine was used during the birth, um, after the birth, and during the birth, you know, prior to the birth. And that little guy now has, uh, chewing problems, um, he has, um, mental health problems, and, um, he is, um, having to be, uh, seen by several, um, uh, different types of doctors, and even having to go as far as to Portland to go to see specialists there. So, um, what is troubling to me on all levels is, is that we just don't have any resources for these kids here. Not in the sense of foster families, the mental health. We don't have facilities to house these kids if they need to be put into, you know, specialty facilities. A fourth of our children that are brought into care are shipped out of this area. So, when my advocates have to advocate for them, some of them drive as far as Portland to go see these kids. They're required to do a face-to-face once a month, and, and then report to the judge on that. And, um, I'd just like to stop at this time and see if you guys have any questions.
When you question's at the end, if there's time, Mr. Chair, unless you have questions now?
Okay. So, um, I think what some of the struggles that we have as well is, um, funding. As you can see on the back, the challenge is, is that, um, our expenses and inverse of our revenue, fifty-six percent of my revenue comes from the county, or, excuse me, from the community. And, um, there's only me and one other full-time person, I do all the fundraising, all of it. And now, in two thousand twenty, I'm having to do at least four to five fundraisers instead of my one that I normally do. So, um, twenty-five percent come from my grants, and then sixteen percent come from the government. So, um, I would, I would ask that you guys, um, come talk to me a little bit more about the need of CASA, where we're at, where we're going, and then go to your legislators and your, um, resources legislatively, because we need the support. I mean, the work we do is like none other, it's very finite. We don't, there is no other program like CASA. So, we support children when they come into care, and we stay with the child through the life of the case, which could, could be up to twenty-two months. So, um, it's, not only that, we're involved with their schooling, their, their health, their, um, uh, additional services that they are needing to make sure that those don't fall through the gra, the gaps, um, dealing with, um, child welfare and the courts, because the system is very hard to maneuver through. So, um, we're that one continual voice for the child in court, and I think that's about it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes, Amy.
Griffin. Griffin, I'm sorry.
So, thank you. Uh, my name is Melanie Caldera, I'm with Oasis Shelter Home. Um, Monica Griffin, I am not sure who this person is, uh, they're not affiliated with Oasis Shelter Home. Also, I represent Leah Seavey, she is out of town and asked me to represent her. I am the, um, advocacy supervisor for Oasis, I've been with Oasis for almost, for five or six years. You lose count when you're living in and around trauma. So, what I'd like to speak to when it comes to, um, drugs, specific to Oasis Shelter Home and the demographic of our community that we serve, is that we have noticed that being a Oasis advocacy and shelter program, uh, we are working with domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, uh, all forms of interpersonal violence, and when we have clients coming into the shelter or into outreach services, we are not just servicing clients for symptoms or reaction or emergencies to domestic violence and to sexual assaults and trafficking. We are servicing them for detoxing from drug addiction, from drug use. We are not allowed to deny access to the shelter if they are using drugs, which poses... We are not allowed to deny access to the shelter if they are using drugs, which poses the next problem, uh, of having clients in the shelter using drugs that is prohibited, which means the first three, four days of our clients coming into the shelter, they are detoxing in shelter. There's no counseling for them available, available drug and alcohol counseling unless they go through Department of Human Services, Child Welfare, any form of Cary Community Health referral process. We have no access to drug and alcohol counseling. We have no access to drug and alcohol rehabilitation, whether that's in-house or out outreach? We have, we have no access to that. Um, we have also found that these clients don't just come with a problem, they don't just come with a crisis, they have a cluster of crises. Um, the cluster effect of Cary County, which I speak of a lot, is the cluster of domestic violence, sexual assault, uh, housing problems, homelessness, drug and alcohol misuse, um, child, uh, child welfare intervention, children are living in foster care, speaking to what Mona says, a hundred percent back what Mona says. Uh, children are living in foster care, we are having co-advocacy where we are working with child welfare, um, in order to facilitate reunification, in order to facilitate a fair chance at getting their children back. But again, we are not just working with victims or survivors of domestic violence. We are working with people that are actively fighting, struggling on a daily basis, homelessness, unemployment, drug use. It's a cluster, it is an absolute cluster. So for us to just stand here and focus only on domestic violence and sexual assault in our program would not do our clients any form of justice. Because again, it is a cluster, we need assistance, we need help. We don't have any rehabilitation centers here. We don't have a person we can pick up the phone and say, "We have a client in shelter that really needs a conversation with you. She needs to understand how to detox. She needs to understand what programs she can go to for help." We have got the domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking part covered. They get a very solid community partner wraparound for that problem, but we are not able to help them with the drug addiction problem, with the drug substance use problem. And, you know, the, the Sheriff Department here has responded to the shelter environment where we have clients in shelter with drugs in shelter. We have the interaction between clients that have been clean for two, three, four months, and clients that are coming in that are only going to start detoxing now. So we have a whole bunch of trauma that's going on there, triggering that's going on there. So do you see the cluster that I'm talking to right now? It is not just domestic violence at Oasis Advocacy and Shelter Services. We are really, really, uh, servicing all of it. We've trying to figure out homelessness, we're trying to figure out, uh, um, substance misuse, we're trying to figure out, uh, alcohol misuse, how do we, how do we, where do we send them, how do we go about this? We are sitting with, uh, advocacy privilege, which means we are not reporters. We cannot just go to a community partner and say, "Hey, I need this person, you know, I want to report to Child Welfare that this person is using substances while they have a child," in order to get them referred to drug and alcohol programs. We need an avenue, we need a person, we need a rehabilitation center, even if it's a house, something small, something, somewhere, someone, we can reach out to you and say, "Okay, we need to co-advocate with you." Most partners here would recognize that we do actively co-advocate with them. We do a cluster wraparound for all of our clients, and the one person that has been missing, the one presence that has been missing with the cluster wraparound, the wraparound services we're providing every individual that comes across our board is missing substance use, counseling, substance use, rehabilitation. There's nobody there at the community meetings, the chip meetings, the CAC meetings, the social services connect meetings. We are all there, every single meeting, we are all there, except there's nobody representing drug and alcohol. There is a huge deficit. Um, we, we can take care of the rest of the cluster, but still, how is unemployment going to be solved if they are struggling with that addiction? How is, you know, everything, criminal, criminal law enforcement, uh, presence in these people's lives? If you look, I'm going to go right back into neurobiology right now, but if you look at the, the basic ACES study, one of the adverse experiences is law enforcement presence in your home, drug presence in your home, criminal presence in your home. So without addressing that, without addressing drug misuse in Cary County, we are really not taking care of the whole cluster, we're not taking care of the family, and we're looking at intergenerational response to the same cluster. I think... I think many will agree with me, it's an intergenerational response, where we were responding to families, we're now responding to their children for the same problems. And this is something that needs to be addressed. Methamphetamines is Cary County's nightmare right now. It is ours too. Oasis Advocacy in shelter, it is a nightmare. Um, and without our community partners, I don't know what we'd do. Methamphetamines, it's, it's, it's an absolute nightmare. We need help in Cary County with this. I need help to serve anybody that comes in front of us with a methamphetamine, with any form of drug addiction that is a severe, a severe disadvantage to them, and they are struggling. These people are struggling, their behaviors are not socially acceptable, their behaviors are, you know, keeping law enforcement on their toes, but they are human beings and they are struggling. It's part of the cluster that they are struggling with every day. They need help. We need help, Cary County needs help. That's all I have to say, these are all the words I have to say on this. It was short and sweet, uh, but the cry for help is there. We need a person, we need something, somewhere, somehow, to fill this gap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Caldera, so sorry to have, I don't know what happened, my wire's getting crossed, I apologize.
Back right, hey? Name change.
Sheriff Ford?
Thank you.
Boy, there's been a plethora of information given. So I want to try to stick to the reason we're here about the opioid and addiction issue. A little follow-up on what the DA said about drug cases being down, that's not correct. We haven't sent a lot of our drug cases over to the DA because they won't file on anything unless we have a positive result back from the crime lab or a NIC test. We don't use NIC tests anymore, and that's a street, it's just a little street test thing, because of the dangerous drugs that are coming through, and there's a lot of agencies that's gone away from the NIC test because of the, the one drug called fentanyl. Just a little bit of fentanyl is enough to kill everybody in this room, probably everybody in this building. So if my deputy's getting, you know, in contact with that, I don't want to face that so we don't do the NIC test. In other words, when we do, uh, we've done many, many cases here recently about drug cas, cases with our canines that have found drugs and everything, we just haven't sent the reports to the DA, because the DA will not file on them and send the report back until we get something from the crime lab. And like the DA says, it could be six months to a year before we get that information back. So, and coupled with the fact that, uh, our great Governor's Office basically decriminalized, the use of possession of controlled substances to fit, from felonies down to misdemeanors, they don't even hardly run cases for misdemeanors anymore. I just wanted to touch bases on that. I pulled something off the internet, I thought it, and it was a good read, and I'll only read just a little bit of about it. I do have my glasses. The National Institute on Drug Abuse, NIDA, regards opioid addiction as a serious public health concern. In two thousand sixteen, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, reported that sixty-six, sixty-six percent of drug overdoses deaths were linked to opioids. Opioids, also called, also called narcotics, are prescription drugs used to treat chronic pain experiences after an accident or surgery. Natural opioids are derived from an opium poppy plant, where others are man-made and synthetic, synthetic heroin and illicit drug. It is also an opioid and has a high rate of abuse and resulting in addiction. Not all of the millions of American men and women addicted to opioids, but abuse of both illegal and prescription opioids have resulted in a high rate of drug overdoses. Illegal prescription opioids. The opioid heroin is a potent and highly addictive substance. Its potentially, its potency, the ability to cause dependency is owed to the fact that it is made from morphine, a substance found in the opium plant. Doctor-prescribed opioids are meant for medical treatment, but misuse and abuse of is often caused a prescription opioid addiction. Persons misuse these medications by taking too many or using them frequently. Frequent or long-term use causes you to develop a tolerance for high addictive drugs. Illegal opioids are like heroin and opium. When you got your prescription opioids are like codeine, morphine, fentanyl, oxycodone, hydrocodone, tramadol, and oxymorphone. All, all those things are, you know, considered possession of controlled substance. And in order to be in possession of a controlled substance, is, they're not yours, or it's an illegal substance. Most of what we're talking about is like the, uh, prescription drugs. We find a lot of people that either steal them, or they, they have a, uh, a prescription, they, they claim that they've been stolen, so the doctor will, and they have to have a police report before the doctor will give them some more. So they get more, and they get, sell, and then they get traded for, um, other drugs or other property, stolen property, and it's just a big cycle. Possession of a controlled substance is abbreviated as PCS and can informally be referred to as drug possession. Possession of a controlled substance in an organ without a valid prescription or other medical legal authorization is punishable as a felony. It was, until they decriminalized it. And like the DA says, if you have a prior felony conviction or more than user amount, and, and it's your second offense, you know, they can charge it as a felony. The government need not prove that the actual possession, but can provide their case by what is called constructive possession, meaning legal fiction or presumption that an individual has actual control over the controlled substance without necessarily having physical control over it. It is unlawful for any person to manufacture or deliver a controlled substance. Any person who violates this substance, as we respect to, is a controlled, a controlled substance is a Schedule I, is a Class A felony. Controlled substance of, in a Schedule II is a Class B felony. A controlled substance in Schedule III is guilty of a Class C felony. Uh, controlled substance in a Schedule IV is a Class B misdemeanor, and a controlled substance in a Schedule V is a Class C misdemeanor. But like I said, you know, with it being decriminalized, um, we don't have a lot of teeth. And I don't know if you guys were watching the news, last night I was watching where, I think it was Ohio did the same thing, and they let out four hundred, uh, people who have, who were convicted of felony, um, drug, drug possession.
Yep.
They decriminal it down to misdemeanor, and they all got out. And they're going to be doing more, and so if we don't have the teeth to do something like this, they're not, the problem's not going to go away. And yeah, we, we do see a lot more heroin problems in, in Cary County. Methamphetamine is the biggest, uh, problem, but heroin is on a, on a steep rise. So that's about all I got for you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Sheriff. Greg Gill, Connie Hunter, and then Beth Barker, the doggo. Say your name and, um, your occupation, if you would.
Yeah, my name is Greg Gill. I'm, uh, the clinical supervisor for Cary Community Health. I guess one of the things that I brought to Cary Community Health, I've been here now for about six, seven months, um, is working the opiate epidemic, you know, it's been, I've been working with it for about fifteen years. I've worked in the downtown Portland area, worked on aggression. Was actually the Director of Allied Health, and were in Redford for five years, and then came here to Cary Community Health. There's definitely is a big rise, you know, and I think that we saw a lot of it about five, six years ago with, um, safe prescribing limits of opiates. You know, the opiate addict is not what people admit it is, it's to be in the back alleyway that's got the needles and all of this. You know, what I've seen over the last eight, ten years is the twenty-something-year-olds, and they're getting a hold of the pills in mom and dad's cupboards, they're finding it in their friends, they're finding it in the schools, and it's everywhere. So we see a lot of people, a lot of young people coming into treatment that aren't even aware of what the opiate is, you know? People will take it for a little while, they'll go through the withdrawal symptoms, and not even know that they're going through withdrawal symptoms. Um, there is a lot of overdose from it, you know? People aren't aware that it's a central nervous system depressant, and what that means is, you know, you take some of the pills, you go out and you party one night with your friends, and you're drinking, so now you've got two central nervous system depressants. They think that they're tired or just passing out, and the person just suffocates in their sleep, they quit breathing. Sheriff talked about, uh, fentanyl, we're seeing a huge rise in that. We saw fentanyl coming into the heroin probably about eight years ago. Didn't see it in the valley until about five years ago, and I've talked to people here in Cary County, they're seeing heroin now. You know, fortunately or unfortunately, I don't know how you want to look at it, but they can smell it when they start cooking it down, they can smell the fentanyl in it. And I can't blame the sheriff that we don't want to, you know, touch the, uh, the product in fear of, you know, dying from it, because it is very potent thing. The opiate epidemic, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of misconceptions out of that as well, too. When I was the Director over at, at, uh, in the valley, you know, we dealt with two different medications there. We dealt with the Schedule II narcotic, which is methadone, and a Schedule III narcotic, which is suboxone, buprenorphine. Uh, buprenorphine is on the rise, it's a great medication, it has what's called a ceiling effect on it that a person cannot ignore. So, safe prescribing, they say, is between two and thirty-two milligrams. Very few people ever go on thirty-two milligrams, um, because of the ceiling effect of it, and people stabilize relatively quickly on it. Um, it's, it's a wonderful medication, we use it at Cary, Cary Community Health. I saw a gal one time come in just crying in tears, and I stopped and I go, "What's going on, what happened?" And she told me about taking two weeks with a medication overnight, just trying to get that high off, and it would last about five to ten minutes. But the nice thing was that she was there and able to cry the next day about it, you know, she didn't die from it. Cary Community Health, since I've come here, um, we've really geared up, and we're really looking to help those people that are on the streets that are using the opiates, whether it's the pills, heroin that's out there. We've got a great medical director, Dr. Whipple, um, he has, uh, got his ex waiver now, we've got two nurse practitioners that, uh, will be getting their ex waiver soon, so we're really gearing up for that. Typical process of somebody coming into our care would be calling up our, you know, community partner, getting in touch with us, we do a quick screen over the phone, we'd like to see them face-to-face, talk to them about their addiction, um, and then we'll do an assessment with them and get them in to see the doctor. Depending on their usage, you know, an IV user will try to get into treatment fairly quick. I had one gal, she was pregnant, a young gal came in, and we got her the medication the same day. You know, we got her stable in no time, so the child had a chance, too. The opiate epidemic is very real, not to take away from the methamphetamine, absolutely, it's probably the worst thing here in the county, but I see enough of the opiates. It's very some concern, for sure, in the communities, as much as this is. I'm just here to do my part, and whatever we can do at Cary Community Health.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Gill.
I have a question, Greg, real quick. Um, when Melanie was talking, she was talking about substance use represent, representation is missing in the cluster. Does your organization partner with her participate in that group? I know you're relatively new, but...
There, there is one, a couple of community meetings that I haven't been able to make, we've been understaffed, and really pushing hard to get people on staff. There is a meeting tomorrow that I'll be attending, the leases will be there and out, but it's the lectures going on. So I do attend some of them when I'm able to, but we're always available on media card if we'll be here today.
Okay, thank you. We're going to do questions after.
Question, maybe?
Don't want to start it.
Thanks for having this, uh, special day, this workshop. It's very important.
Thank you, honey.
Microphone? Microphone.
Yeah, I don't poke myself in the eye with that one. I'm Connie Hunter, and I'm a proud resident of South Curry County. And I'm a person with lived experience. At least that was the title that they gave me when I applied to participate on the Oregon Opioid Taper Guidelines Task Force. The state of Oregon, that particular task force, uh, was particular to changing the guidelines and helping clinicians, uh, make better decisions and, uh, individual people with opioid issues to make better descriptions, pardon me, decisions. We are in the midst of a nationwide push to treat chronic pain and address out of control opioid prescribing. Many providers, including the Veterans Administration, were or are ill-prepared to address the resulting bad, perfect storm from over-prescribing opioids. The CDC recently published recommendations for the treatment of chronic pain, specifically highlighting behavioral treatment as an approach that should be tried even before opioids are prescribed. The state of Oregon Health Authority work in developing a number of opioid prescribing and taper guidelines came as we witnessed a devastating public health crisis that has ruined individual lives, destroyed families, and ripped through communities. Prescribers did not have the tools that they needed to arm themselves with the skills needed to offer clients evidence-based behavioral interventions to help them live healthy and productive lives. In an effort to change the conversation on pain management and improve patient safety, the Oregon Health Authority convened experts and community members from across the state to develop clinical guidelines on opioid prescribing and tapering. And that's the, uh, task force that I sat on. Statewide guidelines are now available for chronic pain, acute pain, dentists, and pregnant women, and on completion of the work of the Oregon Opioid Ta- Taper Guideline Task Force work, the new tapering guidelines will be published soon, uh, probably before 2020. The resulting guidelines from the opioid taper task force supplement the opioid prescribing guidelines for chronic pain to help patients and providers approach opioid tapering with best practices in mind. I'm gonna try and scoot ahead a little bit, um, but it took, it took us about five months to do that work. Um, I wa- I was on a task force with people in, in mental health field, in the healthcare field, uh, top administrators, amazing people, and, uh, and I had lived experience. One of the things, one of the reasons that I decided I really wanted to be on that task force, well, two of them. Uh, one had to do with my own, uh, experience and, and knowing that back in the day when they were, uh, I was prescribed opioids for 10 years, um, the guidelines didn't exist, and it was kind of a free-for-all. But also, uh, the VA, uh, decided in about February of last year to cut opioid prescriptions or pain medications for veterans in half. No tapering, no support, nor choice in the matter, and no decision as to whether they should even be tapered to begin with. These automatic med cuts turned my cellphone into a crisis line. Pretty sure that the same thing occurred across the country, as I have over 2,000 veteran and family member social media contacts, and many have reported this issue and horrible outcomes, including family members, uh, discussing recent suicides of their veteran family member tied to the egregious cuts in pain medications without tapering and guidelines that are meant to provide a way through the maze of changed brain chemistry of a prescribed side effect of chemical dependency. In other words, when you get a prescription for oxycontin, they didn't bother, they didn't have informed consent. They would say, "We're gonna give you this, it'll help you with your pain, and we'll figure out, uh, you know, how long you have to take this." They didn't say, "You're gonna get a chemical dependency, and if you're on it for 10 years, it's gonna change your brain chemistry." Well, that's the reality of it. Um, the change in the brain that adds to the difficulty in tapering off medication, detoxing in increments are of concern. The definition of substance use disorder. A substance use disorder, also known as drug use disorder, is a medical condition in which the use of one or more substances leads to clinically significant impairment or distress. And of course, previous guidelines or lack of guidelines were never trauma-informed. And when it comes to veterans, any treatment should be trauma-informed. These cuts that were done by the VA in response to previous over-medicating that the VA had done in the past, for example, and I'm gonna use, uh, an example that hits close to home, because if I can put a face on it, um, I think it's more meaningful. And I'm gonna talk about retired Navy chief Leslie Sue McConaughey Piotrowski. I'm gonna call her my cousin. My family, uh, three veterans in Ohio moved their families to Arizona together, and so, uh, the McConaughey family was one of those families. My father was a World War II veteran, and, uh, her father was, uh, Leslie, my cousin, her father was a Silver Star winner who, uh, in World War II was in the army and relieved a concentration camp. So when she went into the Navy, it was, it was a big deal, because my dad was Navy. After serving in the US Navy for 20 years and working at the Pentagon on 9/11, where she lost many friends and coworkers and narrowly escaped being injured herself, she was in a car accident, suffered a broken neck. Her resulting condition was a dangerous combination of PTSD and severe pain issues. The deadly cocktail of medications that she was prescribed and an autopsy showed that Navy chief Leslie had not, uh, taken more than her prescription. Uh, but she was labeled a chief's chief by the men and women who served with her and under her. Leslie provided me with information that my family needed when my nephew Kyle was killed in Iraq, when she worked at the Pentagon. Um, and she, at that time, served as a liaison between various branches of the surfaces at the Pentagon. Um, she went to bed one night and never woke up and left two teenage sons over prescribing kills. Because I had lived experience with 10 years of legally prescribed oxycontin, uh, pain management for a C5, C6 neck injury, which resulted in a surgical fusion and the L5S1 discectomy, I applied to be on the task force and I was accepted. Uh, I did the call-in, the meetings were important. My lived experience had taken place, uh, like I said, at a time when guidelines were all over the place. But through the process, uh, the resulting guidelines provide a framework for clinicians and patients looking to develop their own taper plans. You're taking this much, and you wanna go off of that medication a little at a time, and according to what your own needs are. But the, the patients looking to develop their own taper plans as well as starting, a starting point for dialogue between patient and provider. A patient's input matters. When the VA cut prescriptions without even letting that veteran know that that was gonna happen until it did, and providing no taper opportunity, um, was inhumane, in my opinion. Um, but the legacy of these new guidelines is that a patient's input matters. There are times, while sitting on this task force, I wondered if I had been heard, if my suggestions were worthwhile. And I used to stew on that. I'd go spend three hours in the meeting and wonder, did they even hear me? I read between two and four hours per day to try and catch up on the technical information that was shared to help inform the task force efforts. The next draft of the guidelines would come out, we would have changes that reflected that I had been heard, that my own difficult experience and the experiences of my family and the local veterans community and across the country were heard. That may be someone we love, next time won't suffer or die in vain, as we carry forward the truths of their and our own lived experience. Veterans Day is November 11th. This is my gift and my promise to the 15 veterans in Curry County who confided their struggles with me regarding the Veterans Administration policy to over-correct their previous error of over-prescribing medication, and in loving memory of cousin Leslie. And for all those whose families lost veterans because of pain management issues and lack of trauma-informed care, and I'm gonna ask for a second moment of silence. And I need everyone's help to correct this course. Let's start with a moment of silence for all those who have lost lives from opioid Thank you. We are so blessed to have Will Wasson, our VA South Coast Suicide Prevention Coordinator, who is enlightened and devout in his service to veterans as we address the bad, perfect storms that arise from complex problems such as the opioid crisis. It is up to the people like Will to carry this burden daily. The greatest truth that our VA catchment area can rely on rests in the integrity of individuals who do amazing work in spite of an underfunded system. We can say the same thing about our local behavioral health provider, Curry Community Health. As, uh, Curry County Commissioner Court Boyce can attest, as he was there when I made a request of Senator Wyden, as soon as those Oregon guidelines are published, that I will personally provide Senator Wyden a copy of those guidelines to present to the VA Secretary Wilkie. Commissioner Boyce, will you help me with this effort? I already know the answer to that. And following the publication of those guidelines, that do not shame the person who needs pain management, but provides dignity and respect that an individual deserves, that the process of tapering only when needed, and with the emphasis on the patient's timing while providing support is, thank you, I so appreciate you. Providing support that is customized for the individual. I'm asking each of you to be advocates regarding this. I know even before I asked this of Commissioner Chris Pash to advocate at NACO for the VA to adopt similar humane opioid tapering guided, guidelines, that he's already on it. I know that. Beyond that, because of the number of veterans who are in Curry County and our South catchment area, would the Curry County Board of Commissioners consider writing a letter of solidarity to the VA to let them know that these new guidelines are available and suggest adopting similar guidelines? I'm not gonna go on much longer, but I can tell you, the experience that I had being on that task force did me a huge favor. I remember distinctly that I was not only feeling empowered to help provide input, but also liberated because I was given information that relieved my own guilty feelings of the side effect of a faulty drug. Words such as drug addiction, which creates a drug addict, are really victim shaming. Back when I was prescribed oxycontin, it was not with informed consent. No one told me I would receive pain relief and a chemical dependency. Um, I have a number of, uh, attachments, I'm not gonna get into too much more, but, uh, I encourage people to consider sitting on the Curry Community Health Behavioral Health Advisory Board, and then, uh, we need more volunteers and community stakeholders' participation in these quarterly meetings, um, to provide, uh, direction and assessment of the work that they're doing. Um, I do have applications for, uh, that opportunity if anybody is interested, and I have a full package of information to anybody in the audience that would like what I've shared today. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thanks, Connie. Beth?
It's, um, Beth Barker Hidalgo, the Director of the Curry Homeless Coalition, and, um, I just wanna thank Commissioners and the Chair for this opportunity to share information, um, with you about how our community is impacted by illicit drug abuse, particularly opioid misuse, and overall substance use disorder, um, from the lens of the Curry Homeless Coalition. Um, I was fortunate enough to receive a scholarship from Advanced Health to attend the OPAT, which is Opioid Pain Alternative Treatment Conference in May of this year. Um, I learned a great deal about treatment opportunities, reducing the stigma associated with substance abuse, misuse, um, whether it's illegal substances, prescription medication, or medicated, um, medication-assisted treatment. Um, you have handouts there, there's a handout titled "Opioids in Curry County" and "South Coast Prescription Drug Overdose Prevention Grant Report," which were both produced by Kate Frame, um, with Advanced Health. Um, I'm not taking any credit for that, that's her work. And there is also "White Paper: Opioids in the EMS Response." That's not a local, um, lens, but I just thought might, might be a little bit of a different twist on, on the perspective of, from, uh, first responders. So, the first thing I'd wanna point out in the grant report is the lack of information regarding Curry County. Um, it's an unfortunate and directly related to the lack of data collection, data sharing, and reporting at the local and regional level. So, um, one of the reasons that we don't have the data collection that has been given by medical providers here in Curry County is that, um, we're such a small community that if we report these things, then it won't remain private. And I would argue, and I'm gonna push back really hard on that, because, um, I know of a recent incident of a young person that we've been working with for nearly a year now, that presented in our emergency room here in Curry County, and presented as an opioid, uh, heroin overdose, suicide attempt. And when the CCO received the documentation from the ER visit, it said ER visit. There was zero information on why this person was presented at the ER, and so it's impossible for their provider to follow up appropriately with this person, whether it be Curry Community Health or any other provider in the community, um, to be able to address the suicidality, to address the drug misuse. So that's a, a huge barrier for us addressing the issues that we have in Curry County, whether it's heroin, or methamphetamines, or alcohol abuse. It, it, we gotta get out of that concept that we can't talk about these things because we might, we might violate somebody's privacy. Meanwhile, we have people that are, um, that are overdosing in our community. And so, I think a better pathway for us would be to look into the Oregon Health Authority's recommendation, which is to work collaboratively at that local level. Sit down and figure out, how can we protect people's privacy and gather that important data and report it up to the state? Because if you go to the O3A dashboard right now that's maintained by Oregon Health Authority, it looks as though Curry County doesn't have a problem, and it's because of the lack of data. So if we don't have a problem, we can't go after the grant funding to produce, uh, treatment centers to, to support any kind of efforts that we might wanna take on to address the issues. So first of all, we've gotta collect and, and report the data. The report goes on to state that Curry overdose death and hospitalization rate data is suppressed. Um, so again, that's just backing up what I was just saying. The final segment of the report discusses the development of an interdisciplinary team in Curry County, and that was headed up by Beth Beasley at Curry Community Health, the Public Health Prevention Coordinator. Um, it involved the Brookings Alliance on Prevention, where there was representation from law enforcement, city officials, school-based health center staff, a member of the Youth Advisory Council, a parent, service club member, a business owner, a retired judge, and a school administrator. I'd like to know if that council still exists? If so, what, when do they meet? What are they doing? Are we working on moving the needle in Curry County? And, and it should also be county-wide, it should not just be happening in Brookings. We have an issue county-wide, we should be looking at it from a county-wide lens, so. Um, according to the 2018 Curry Community Health Assessment, the mortality and mortality associated with inappropriate use of opiate drugs such as codeine, oxycodone, morphine, and methadone have a negative impact on the health of the community overall. Uh, not just the, the individuals that are having an issue, but it's our community overall. Um, prescribing patterns for Curry residents on Medicare for 2013 to 14 show higher rates of opioid prescriptions than state and national trends. Um, among the youth, 25.5% of 11th graders in Curry County say that it would be either easy or very easy to get prescription drugs, not prescribed or very easy to get prescription drugs not prescribed to them in 2017's Healthy Teens Survey. We heard earlier about how kids can get ahold of medication, their parents, grandparents, friends. When a teen comes to your home and asks to use your bathroom, make sure there's nothing in that medicine cabinet that's going to walk out the door when they leave. Protect your medication if you have it. Protect the kids. I'm requesting the Board of Commissioners support and urge outreach to Oregon Health Authority, Curry County Providers, and CCOs to develop a data collection, analysis, and reporting system. OHSU may be an option for assistance with a project of this magnitude, importance, and impact. Maybe we can get an intern assigned to the county to work on this. Since opening the Resource Center, I've learned anecdotally of a countywide trend wherein unhoused people are targeted to move illegal drugs into our community. Drug dealers know that many people who have experienced what is defined as chronic homelessness often have trimorbidity, which means they suffer from mental illness, substance use disorder, and homelessness. This makes these people easy targets to mule drugs into our communities. Now, high rate of incarceration amongst homeless people contributes to high fuse, frequent user system engagement scores, resulting in higher costs to the community overall. Our Sheriff's Department houses many people who suffer from mental illness and or substance use disorder, which is not effectively treated in jail, nor should jail staff be expected to effectively treat people with substance use disorder and/or mental illness. Curry County would benefit tremendously from the addition of a local residential treatment facility. Oxford House is a proven approach to treatment for substance use disorder. As Akasa in Curry County have witnessed the barrier to treatment due to the need to leave their home community. Leaving their home community for treatment prevents a huge barrier to achieving sobriety for many people in Curry County. There are evidence-based programs providing residential treatment we could and should explore if we're serious about helping our community heal from substance use disorder. I'll share with you some data points we've collected. I'm kind of shifting gears just so that you can get an idea of who we're serving across the street. It's just a little snapshot we have seen as of today. I put 166 clients. I entered a new one right before I came over here. We have 167 clients in our database, 275 individual visits to the Resource Center for a variety of services: showers, food, clothing, peer support, just a place to hang out where they're welcome. We've logged 56 showers. We've provided more, but we didn't begin logging the data until about June, July. We've helped 13 households receive homeless prevention funds to remain housed or for over-the-threshold assistance totaling over $15,000. 38% of our clients served or housed. We're not just serving homeless people. They're experiencing extreme poverty and/or rent burdened. In other words, they're spending between 50% to 80% of their income on housing, so don't have funds to meet all their needs. That's just that cluster of crisis and trauma that Melanie was talking about. And that weighs so heavily on people that they tend to turn to anything that will numb the pain that they're feeling from just having to live in the crisis of poverty day after day. We're hosting three AA meetings per week. We welcome additional opportunities to support increased access to programs offering support for people in recovery. We recently began offering mail services to folks who have nowhere to receive incoming mail. People can use general delivery at the post office for some mail correspondence, but vital service providers like Public Utilities Commission Lifeline Sales Services require a physical mailing address. And we're now contracted with ORCA, Oregon Coast Community Action, to be the coordinators in Curry County for the Point in Time Count, the annual homeless census, and HUD's Coordinated Entry Assessment Program. Coordinated entry assessments are now the pathway to housing and services by community action agencies across the country. Short of developing low-barrier integrated services, transitional housing for our unhoused residents, the Curry County Homeless Coalition provides services designed to respond to gaps in services as best we can. The reality is, the longer the people remain unhoused, the higher the likelihood they will turn to alcohol or illicit drugs to anesthetize the cold, lonely, stigmatized, and isolated life they are living. It's a focus to support capacity building in Curry County that would provide a high level of case management, peer support, navigation services for unhoused people. We believe the pursuit of increased human capital is a necessary step before we tackle the issue of increasing permanent supportive or transitional housing in Curry County. To that end, Advanced Health has begun recruitment for traditional health workers and peer support specialists. And CCO 2.0 requires that these positions be filled in order to be better able to manage the needs of people experiencing extreme poverty, homelessness, and substance use disorder, and mental illness. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, we'll try and speed it up. You want to take a break?
I just want to say one thing real quick. We're going to take a real quick seven-minute break. How about we come back at 3:45? Let everybody stretch for a minute. Being November 6th, it is now 3:45. Commissioner Bois?
Wendy Lang, then Will Wasson, then Jack Antunes, David Fortman. Real quick, Mr. Chair, the reason I brought up the horrible thing that happened in Mexico just is because with open borders, this is where the heroin, this is where the opioids, this is where the fentanyl comes from. And so, I just wanted to tie that all together. Thanks for being here, Director Lang.
Thanks for having me, Wendy Lang, Curry County Juvenile Department. Just going to share some quick trends that we're seeing in this opioid crisis that we're in in the juvenile world. I can tell you...
One second, I'm sorry. 3:46 PM on November 6th, we are in session. I got it. Start again, I'm sorry. It wasn't recording.
No problem. Wendy Lang, Curry County Juvenile Department. I'd like to share some trends that we're seeing in this opioid crisis that we're in. And I do mean that wholeheartedly. It is my opinion that it is out of control in the youth in Curry County. Our youth, and it is out of control. Several years ago, we started seeing oxycodone, we started seeing hydrocodone. We would see it in UA results, maybe in backpacks. One thing about kids is kids like to talk. You ask them questions, and they'll tell you what's up. So, we get a wealth of information. So, we were seeing a wide variety of use, maybe some of it prescribed, most of it not. Then we jumped into some codeine, which was the cough medicine. It was a thing the kids called "drank." And they'd make their little cocktail off the recipe. They would chug flavored cough syrup with a little bit of Sprite or something in it. About a year and a half ago, we started seeing morphine pop into the scene, and we started seeing kids with morphine. They're taking it themselves, they're taking it to school, they're selling it, five to 80 bucks a pill, whatever they can get for it. They're trading it. The tough part about kids and prescription drugs or cough syrup that you get off the shelf is they have no fear. They have no fear of something that's prescribed by a doctor. So, for them to take somebody else's pills, or take grandpa's pills, or grandma's pills, or whatever they can find, they don't have the fear of what's going to happen to them. So, the more adults get prescription drugs, the more kids find prescription drugs. We don't see a lot of kids out seeking or going to the doctor for pain to get prescriptions. We see them taking, and it's very, very easy for them to get to them. I would love to tell you that since I've been here for about 15 years in the juvenile world, we've not seen heroin in our youth. And I can tell you, about six months ago, we now have confirmed heroin use in the youth in our county. And that's not just the kids on our caseload. So, we every day try to figure out what our plan's going to be. This is new to us. This is something that we haven't dealt with in this county. We have outpatient treatment. We have our kids go to Curry Community Health for their outpatient treatment. Curry County does not have intensive outpatient, which is where you would see somebody five times a week, and we do not have residential treatment. For our youth to go to residential treatment, there are two places in this state. One is Roseburg, and one's Clearover in Primeville, Oregon. And to get our kid on their list is just about impossible. Insurance will do everything in the world to say they don't need it, and they'll kick it out. So, if you can get a kid on OHP, then we can probably get a kid into residential treatment, I don't know, maybe three months down the road. So, we're, again, this is a new drug use for us, so we're still trying to figure out what we do. We're doing daily check-ins. We're monitoring. We're monitoring social media. But it's here, and it's here for our youth. What's really tough about the opioid problem for us is it really has a short half-life. Half-life is how long it stays in their system. So, you know, we test a kid, and if they've been using marijuana, it can be in their system for 30 to 60 days. These can be out in two days. So, for us to be able to UA them and find out that they're using it, it's a very difficult find. They can play the game. They know they get a UA, and then they can use because they know they're not going to get another one in two days. The resources we have to track is very difficult. Again, we're working on that every day. We work with Curry Community Health. We work with our partners to try to figure out what we're going to do. The concerns for us, again, it's easy for them to get, and it's hard for us to detect. We track social media. We try to figure out how they're doing it. And there's this, you know, kids don't really like to inject. That freaks them out, so they're doing different methods of using their heroin. Most recently, in comments we're seeing, is everybody hears vaping pens on the news. Well, there's now recipes for vaping heroin. We don't have on the streets in our county, you heard the sheriff say, "We don't have the NIC kits anymore." So, even in the schools, we're overwhelmed with vaping pens in the schools right now. Like, Brookings got a school resource officer, and we can't keep up with all the vaping pens he's taking on a daily basis. But we can't test it to know if it's tobacco or marijuana at this point? How in the heck are we going to ever be able to test it to know if there's heroin in it? We've got reports coming in of, you know, the girls in our schools doing favors for heroin. This is real. This is Curry County. This is something that I never thought I'd be standing in front of you saying that's with our youth. And we don't have a plan for it right now. We're going day to day to try to figure out what we're going to do to help these kids. We've got to help them. We've got to help them before they get into the adult world. And we are going to see some criminal behavior from this. We're seeing it right now. It's an expensive habit, and it's an addictive habit. We don't have detox. We have treatment, but we don't have detox. So, they're going to do whatever they have to do to get their fix. I am so glad to hear that you guys are taking information on this and asking all of us what's going on. Because in my department, the opioid epidemic is real, and we are in crisis in the youth in our county. It is everywhere. It's pretty normal to hear police reports of pills falling out of pockets and no names on them, and search kids, and it's in their clothes. And we are charging every time we get it. We are not charging to criminalize them, we are charging to get them help. And that's the information that I have.
Thank you.
Sure, not so sweet, but any help that we can get in our department is much appreciated.
Thank you, Director Lang. Will Wasson?
Good afternoon. My name is Will Wasson. I am the Suicide Prevention Coordinator for the VA Coastal, four southern counties, from Lane, Coos, Curry, to Delmore. I'm very excited to be here. It's a very passionate subject to me, and I think it's very interrelated with the conversations that we're having today, so thank you for giving my time today. Couple different aspects that I wanted to start off with. I really just wanted to understand the idea of why suicide prevention and what's the importance behind this. When I look at this, first aspect for me is it's a national public health concern. So, when I think of a national public health concern, I think about conveying that to many people. I think of data points, often. So, when I think of data points, when I come to suicide prevention, I think of 10, I think of 45,000, I think of 123, and I think of 12. So, it's the tenth leading cost for death of all ages in the United States, suicide. Nearly every year, we lose 45,000 Americans to suicide. 123 Americans die every day, on average, and every 12 minutes, we lose another American to suicide. And in fact, I think by the time that we started this presentation to where we are now, I think we have lost approximately six people to suicide in our nation. And here in Curry County, it's even bigger issue. Our suicide death rate ratio is the highest in the state, and it's high, very high for the country. And so, we have a very huge opportunity to impact on this. While I work for veterans, and that's the second part of why we have prevention programs, suicide prevention programs, because our veterans are a national, are a main concern for us. This doesn't just center on veterans. It doesn't just center on youth. It doesn't center just on males, or other at-risk populations, LGBT, including. If we're addressing this for one population, we need to be addressing this for all, and that's my goal. The VA really forms on and functions on the idea of a public health approach, using data-driven methods, outcomes, understanding those, and collaborating in federal, state, and local. The idea behind that is crucial, because if we look at the veteran statistics, on average, there's 20 suicides each day. Six of those veterans are in VA healthcare systems. That's 14 veterans not receiving any VA healthcare benefits. And how do we access them? How do we identify them? And what do we do in those cases? That's the safety net that needs to occur throughout a community. We need to identify what resources and what gaps in those resources are available. When I start thinking about that, there's a few barriers that I think of when I think of Curry County, Coos County, in general down on the southern coast in terms of opportunities, I think, that we have. I certainly think of overall lack of mental health providers. And so, what's our area opportunity? Well, how do we recruit? How do we retain? Are we using federal student loan repayment grants that we can offer people to get them to come to these localities? What are our options to get them to be here and to retain them? I just drove all the way across country from Baltimore, Maryland, nine months ago to take this job because I care. Local hospitals. Is there an APU? To my knowledge, there's not. Do they have mandated emergency beds for those that are acute? To my knowledge, it's not happening. Why? Because we're referring our veterans over to the local hospital, and within two to three hours later, they're released right back into public. So, is it they're not adequate space? Are they not doing effective instruments, screenings, evaluations, assessments? I'm not sure. But releasing someone who's acute for suicide right back onto the streets is a recipe for disaster. And it's also burning out our staff. So, you want to recruit and retain mental health providers? It's not going to happen in that way. How do we work better as a system? How do we work better from VA to local hospital, back to big VA with APU? Because we have one there, and we can, there are transfer alternatives for this. When I think of other areas of opportunities, I think of awareness. Stigma is present. How do we combat that? Well, we talk about it. So, thanks for having me here today. I appreciate that. We get out in the community. In Coos County, we've trained over 220 local professionals, residents, cab drivers, bartenders, all sorts of different aspects of community residents. And that's important. And why do I know it is? Because I've had people approach me and say, "From the training you gave me," which is very simple, it's usually three to four very easy steps, they've been able to feel comfortable and pull from out of that belly of uncomfortableness when they identify someone who's at risk, signs, they identify signs. They know then to ask the question. After they ask the question, they help by listening. Let the person tell their story, especially for our veterans. Don't thank them for their service. Let them tell their story. And then, what do you do next? You get them to care. You help them understand there is help. Suicide is preventable. And then, you expedite them to that treatment. That's the SAV model we use at the VA. And that's the things that we can do out in the community, whether it's that model or a different model, to make awareness happen and make people feel safe to be able to encounter and address those people who are at risk. And I think we can do more of that here, including train the trainers. Let's make some local trainers. Let's have them sign contracts where they're willing to do trainings for the communities thereafter. That's a huge opportunity for us. When I think of another huge aspect, I think of lethal means storage. It's not my favorite topic to have, because I feel a lot of resistance, and I understand that. My dad is a gun owner, he's a big hunter, all those great things. But we're not talking that. What we're talking is lethality behind gun use for suicide is at an all-time rate. And in fact, in 2017, 70.7 of male veteran suicides and 43.2 of female veteran suicides were due to firearms. of female veteran suicides were due to firearms. The aspect of suicide is usually an acute moment, that if we can help them ride that moment and not act on that impulsivity by safe gun storage, gun locks, not only could they save themselves in that moment, but they're gonna save their kid who accidentally identified the gun and located it as well. That's a huge opportunity. What can we do? Can we partner with local stores, gun stores, local associations? Let's not make this from an enforcement aspect, let's get a buy-in part, especially with the people they're more likely to interact with at the local stores from who they buy their guns from. I think it's an area of opportunity. When I think of other opportunities, I think of faith-based initiatives. Why not getting a faith-based hub going? Identifying the local pastors, asking to train them in these suicide prevention aspects, seeing if we can get their congregation chain. How about having them promote mental health resources after we develop a cumulative list that is needed? Let's have them help us move the needle, okay? I think of primary care. Are they doing the screenings? Do they know about the Columbia Suicide Risk Severity Rating Scale? It is an evidence-based questionnaire scale that you can do with a patient that's eight questions. It weeds out ideation from intent from action. That is huge and it's an opportunity for us truly to identify those that are in need. Are they utilizing those? Do they know what to do if they do have someone acute? I think of post-vention. A hundred and thirty-five people are impacted by every single suicide that occurs. A mother, a father, a post office, the barista, the doctor, and don't forget the doctors and the therapists, because that's a whole nother realm of people that we need to be focused in on when there's a death of suicide, because that increases their burnout. So I think that's a huge area of opportunity. And I want to make sure that I do address the other little aspect that I heard today. I was the former director, clinical director of an HIV prevention and treatment program. We had a behavioral health program there with opioid maintenance therapy provided in Suboxone. We also had outpatient standard modality, we had intensive outpatient standard modality and we had ability to refer to inpatient. One thing I can say on that, no systematic approach to stopping opioid is gonna work. Work with individuals on an individual level. I understand the need to decrease the levels that are being prescribed, absolutely, but we need to meet people where they're at as well, because otherwise, they're out on the streets buying it and they're getting the fentanyl version, or they're calling the veteran crisis line and reporting suicide, or they're identifying that that's their next step, because no one is meeting them where they're at. They were not educated, they were not provided understanding of alternatives. You don't just tell a veteran to go get acupuncture or try some Tai Chi or yoga. You do that as you're tapering them down and you're educating them and you have them access those services at the same time. Plus, there's tools to show that they actually do work, but they are not going to buy that unless you show them to the water and help them understand that it's drinkable water. So I think this is just quite a few different areas of opportunity. I look forward to working with everyone here to see how we can move the needle further on this.
Thank you for making the trip down here, Mr. Wasson. Jackie Antounas?
Jackie Antounas, I'm the Executive Director of Wally's House. It's our county's Child Abuse Intervention Center. When Commissioner Boyce asked me to speak to this crisis, I had to think long and hard about what I had to contribute in the information that I have. And I've sat here and I've listened to all our community partners that have accepted the invitation and spoken to the issue that's in front of us. And I have to underline Director Lang's cry. I worked for the Juvenile Department, I've seen things increase when I was there, and what she's dealing with now has to absolutely be a frustrating nightmare. I don't know what a night's sleep looks like for her when she has to think about what she has to face at work. As the Executive Director of a Child Abuse Intervention Center, the cases that I see and that I deal with are because I've been asked by the Department of Human Services and law enforcement to conduct a forensic interview of a child where there's allegations of abuse or suspected abuse, maybe the child themselves has made a disclosure to someone and it's been reported. We've had some cases where I can say definitely support what the district attorney has said about methamphetamine, children who are severely neglected and, I mean, the dental neglect, the children who are the oldest sibling and they're scrounging around trying to find food for younger siblings. Maybe nobody has physically abused them, but I can tell you that the most under-addressed and highest type of abuse is neglect in our county, in our state, and in our country. It's finally taking root and being addressed more and more, but it's horrific, because mom and dad are off seeking drugs, whether they're methamphetamine, heroin, opioids, it's an issue. The children that I see are not at as a higher rate as Mona Chandler said on her CASA list, sometimes it doesn't require a forensic interview. Sometimes DHS can walk in and take custody of those children and start a dependency petition and those children may be non-verbal or they may be too young for us to conduct an interview. I just completed my VOCA grant application report for the last federal fiscal year. I actually, that report went from October first of 2018 to September thirtieth of this year, 2019. And we saw forty-eight children in our center during that particular round of months. Again, we have less than three thousand children in our county under the age of eighteen. So, I think it's a low number in some aspects, in other aspects, it's atrocious that we had to see that many children in our center. Some of them were siblings, some of them were single cases, some of them were sexually abused, some of them were just, it was about neglect. Mom and dad seeking drugs and the oldest child trying to figure out some way to find food within, in that house or call relatives and say, can you bring us something? And when the relative shows up, there's animal feces around the house and there's dirty dishes all over the kitchen and there's nothing to eat in the home, or if there's food, it's spoiled. So, like Director Lang, I'm gonna make it short and I'm sorry, it's so negative, but we have to address these issues. Ms. Chandler spoke of funding. Our grant, our funding comes mostly from grants from the state and federal government. We have a few foundation grants. And what funding we do get from the state is at seventeen percent. So we have mandated services like Ms. Chandler and the funding that we're getting for those mandated services doesn't even meet the need. We have people saying, I would like to give you money, but I want it to go directly to the clients or to the children. That's fine, we will, we're happy to make sure that there are teddy bears, quilts, snacks, drinks for the children, but what best serves those children is having staff in place and making sure that referrals are made to our community partners. We can make referrals for mental health services. We can make referrals for following up with doing the medical exams we need to that we can't get done in the center. I'm sorry.
It's okay, Jackie.
The need is so huge for everything, everyone. I'm hearing the cry for people that need suicide prevention. Another case that I just dealt with was getting a referral on a teenager who was suicidal and had overdosed on heroin. So it's there, I don't see as much as these people that are here crying out for more services and more ways to bring services into our community. But I know that it's there, I talk to them and I deal with just a small fraction of what they do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fordman?
Thank you.
Last but certainly not least, sir.
Thank you Commissioner Boyce and Commissioners for having this hearing. After spending thirty-four years in law enforcement coming to this job, let me just give you another perspective to the opioid problems in Curry County. For those of us that don't believe that we have anybody in our family with these problems, all you do is look at your neighbor and look at some of the problems that we have here. As I'm sitting here listening to the stories, I'm thinking about, well, in the last seven days, what have you done that has been involved in drugs in my field? Thursday, went to a home where they, I'll call her the grandmother, was on severe pain medications, a hoarder, six-foot piles of stuff, that collapsed on the responders that coming in, trapping everybody in the house. Her son lives downstairs, he's not as bad of a hoarder, he's got four-foot piles of stuff. On Friday, was dog bites between transients and a citizen involving drugs, obviously were there. Saturday, I got called out for a neighbor dispute, that the neighbors next door with all the trash and all the animals were now burning things and they could smell the sewage and they were suspecting that it was methamphetamines, both the sheriff and I had to go out on that. On Saturday, Sunday, got a call for a dog at large down at the port menacing people, pit bull, which turned out to be a transient that was encamped out on Winchuck Road who then moved into one of the port storage buildings. On Monday, followed up on a complaint from Saturday that I didn't go out to and the little walkway that everybody uses to go up from Lower Harbor Road to get on the other side of the bridge, had a little encampment there. And as I'm cleaning up the encampment, I'm running into syringes and needles every day. On Tuesday, I'm responding to a call referred by the Sheriff's Department of people living in their RVs out in the booms. And every RV call that I go to is full of syringes, a slew of drugs, all the problems that are not only being used as a residence, they're being used to manufacture drugs to sell the drugs. On Wednesday night, last night, I got a call for an encampment fire from the Sheriff's Department, doing a great job, who's, the fire is across the street from a person who was dying of cancer, who is complaining every day about the transients across the street and the smells that are coming from. So these are all issues that are affecting all of us. The needles, the residents, the encampments, the dogs. Last week, I was at another property where nine people were living in a two-bedroom house. Again, the drugs are there. When I walk on the properties, much like law enforcement sees, I see either manic people and I know which drug they're on, and I see people who are very sedate and calm, but then they have the five, six-foot piles of garbage and the overflowing sewage. I can tell you in every one of your neighbors and near some of your own homes, there's squats, there's wasted apartment, wasted property where the drug users bring their drugs there. And right off of Cape Farrell, for example, I was at last week, three-foot piles of garbage that I'm crawling over the top of trying to get into, and when I get into it, I see the prescription bottles, the needles and all that, and that's where the people are bringing their drugs to do, they can do. Some of our old famous residents, old-time residents down in South County, same thing, I've been abandoned and the drugs are being used. Other places I'm finding encampments, people have moved in with their RVs and are just doing the drugs next to each other and cooking and sharing and all that. So, all in mind shortly by saying, this is not just a problem of a family, it's not just a problem of an individual or a service that's providing to the county, it's a problem of all of us. It lives next door to you, okay? And if you are not afraid of that trash and those things next door to you, that first house that I went to with the hoarder that the first responders got into, all their stuffs are piled on top of electrical cords and everything's running in their house and they're on a hill with grass in a valley that's just gonna burn down. Or they're in an old trailer park, our thirty, forty-year-old trailer parks in Harbor that will just go one fire to another and go up. So it's a problem that needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed on the human level, but it needs to be addressed on the institution and on society level. And we all need to recognize, it's not, well, we don't have any drug problems in our family, you got a drug problem in your community. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Boyce have something to finish with?
Just, I'm gonna process all. Absolutely love every person that spoke here today. I knew I was gonna learn a lot, but the level of information, the frustration, the concern, the hearts, mighty powerful. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gold, do you have closing comment?
Just that I learned a whole lot. It's unfortunate that we have a lot of these problems and hopefully we can move forward to actually do something about the problems. I don't, I think it's gonna have to be a whole community effort, not just Commissioners.
I want to say when I grew up as a kid, you know, we grew up around our siblings and I had a sister of mine that ended up going in the Army and after she got out of the Army, she became an RN and ran a crash unit for pediatrics for twenty-six years. I used to sit back and say, that little, my little sister, she really turned into all that. What I want to say, the reason I bring that up is because all of you are her to me. You're all heroes, because you deal with a part of our society that nobody really wants to deal with. To have people to come in and willingly give back to the youth of this nation, you're our heroes. To have people willing to run into bullets that are being fired at them, those are heroes. And I want to say from this board's stand, thank you all for doing what you do, thank you for sharing with us today, and we will move this forward. So thank you for being here and with nothing further, this meeting is adjourned.